I now declare that the Plano City Council is reconvened in an open session, that all members are present. We'll begin tonight's regular meeting with the invocation led by Reverend Dr. Kyle Dennis with the First Christian Church of Plano and the Pledge of Allegiance and Texas Pledge led by Boy Scout Troop 259 from the St. Elizabeth Ann Seaton Catholic Church. Would you please rise?
Lord, tonight, on this cold night where it's wet outside and dreary and kind of depressing, we're grateful that we have a place to be that's bright and warm. But we have to admit that sometimes we feel more like it is outside. We feel discouraged and we feel tired and we even feel hopeless sometimes. I'm so grateful for all the people who are around this table and all the people who are in this room because I know they care about the people of our city. And some of them have been working on problems in our community for as long as they can remember. And for anyone who's running out of hope and who's running out of energy and feels more and more like they're alone, Lord, tonight we ask for renewal. We ask for new strength and new wisdom and new grace. I ask you for creativity for all those who have to make decisions, for discernment as they listen to the people of our city and wisdom. I ask you for courage as they make decisions and I ask you for unity, that they could arrive at consensus not only with each other but with the people of our city so that we could move forward together with confidence. We ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Guys, come on down.
Please join me in the United States Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one safe and free from God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Be seated. All right, since there are so many, I'll give you the choice. We have like a key ring or these little things that are, that have our logo on. Take your pick. There you go. I feel like I'm Halloween.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you guys for being here. All right, don't go. We're going to take a picture. Hold on. Guys, come on. Did you get yours? All right. Who hasn't gotten one? Well, you've got to get aggressive. You got one? Everybody have one? Okay, let's, let's turn around. Leaders, come on up too. And let's, let's take up. All right, everybody come around this way and just turn around and face back up. Come back. You big guys, come back here. Look at you. You're getting just swamped. Can you see? Can you see her? Thanks, guys. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, guys. Really appreciate it. Thank you. We get excited about having the troops back, the Boy Scouts back in our council chambers. We went without them for a while, so we're really excited to have you back. It's now my honor to pronounce a proclamation that we prepared for Black History Month, which is observed every February nationally. I'd like to call Dolly Thomas and all of you down, please, to come down if you don't mind. Thank you, guys, for being here. And whereas Black History Month has been an annual United States celebration since the bicentennial in 1976 with a purpose to promote the many cultural, economic, social, and political contributions made by black men and women across the nation. And whereas the city of Plano takes pride in its members of our black community and honors organizations, families, and individuals of African-American descent and appreciation of their invaluable contributions. Black history has a rich cultural heritage in Plano, beginning in the 1860s when Andy Drake became the first black man to settle in Plano after receiving his freedom. Together with Mo Stimson, Drake founded a community named after abolitionist Frederick Douglass. Since that time, the area along US 75, south of 15th Street, has been known as the Plano Douglass Community. We are proud that descendants of the Drake-Stimson family still reside in this special neighborhood. We encourage all to discover the achievements and sacrifices by the African-American men and women who have contributed to the advancement of human rights here in Plano and across the country. Now, therefore, I, John Muns, Mayor of the City of Plano, Texas, do hereby proclaim February 2025 should be celebrated as Black History Month in appreciation of the many achievements of the Plano's African-American community in the city of excellence. Thank you all. I would encourage all of you to go to the Plano African-American Museum and the Douglass Community. It is a wonderful, wonderful gift to this community. We were there Saturday and the displays that they have and the history that is there that really is historical right here in Plano is amazing. And so I encourage everyone to please come by and see it. Thank you. Can we get a picture? Come on over here. Come on, Dottie. You know what to do. It means so much to us. So I'd like to call forward Ron Smith, Director of Our Parks and Recreation. Do you have something too?
Yes.
What do you think I called you down here for, Ron? Sorry. I know, I know. It's still in the box. We wanted to present Hayden Pageant with a certificate of appreciation for his dedicated service as a Parks and Recreation Board Commissioner and Chair. So Hayden, if you'd come down.
I've got the certificate of appreciation, but I think Ron's got a plaque, which is really even more impressive.
All right. We'll hold on. Thanks. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. We had to spend some time in a work session and so we weren't able to get our preliminary open meeting in, so we're going to go back to that briefly and get that done. So I now declare that the Plano City Council preliminary open meeting is convened in an open session, that all council members are present. Our first item is, on the preliminary agenda, is consideration action resulting from the executive session. Our next item is the comprehensive monthly financial report. Denise Tackey.
Good evening. Pull it. Yeah, there you go. Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. So this is our, I'm Denise Tackey. I'm the Finance Director for the City of Plano. This is our comprehensive monthly financial report for September 2024. This is effectively our results of our entire year. So this slide represents revenues compared to budget by fund. The General Fund has revenues of 362.2 million for the fiscal year. This represents 100.9% of the total annual budget. The Water and Sewer Fund has 222.9 million in revenues, which represents 101.9% of the total annual budget. Our expenses expenditures by fund, the General Fund has expenditures of 359.3 million for the fiscal year, which represented 99% of the budget. The Water and Sewer Fund has expenditures of 181.6 million, which represents 96.4% of the total annual budget. This slide represents our net change in fund balance for the past three years. In the General Fund, for the fiscal year, fund balance decreased by 14.3 million. This is lower than where we were trending last year where we only were at a decrease of 12.3 million. The Water and Sewer Fund has increased by 3.8 million and this is lower than prior year where our fund balance had increased by 13.6 million. Our General Fund revenues are higher than the prior year by 19.3 million. This was an increase in property tax revenue of $12.9 million. Sales tax revenue increased by 4.1 million over the prior fiscal year and interest income increased by 1.5 million. Our General Fund expenditures are higher than the prior year by 39.2 million. Personnel costs increased by 23.5 due to budgeted salary and longevity pay increases as well as increased overtime in the fire department. Contractual and professional fees increased by 2.5 million due to higher water usage in city departments and lease of some fire equipment. Our Health Claims Fund had an increase in fund balance of about 4.3 million. This is mostly due to plan design changes, which include using a healthcare highway network that negotiates lower rates with certain providers. Unemployment rates in June were 3.9% and they went down to 3.6% in September for the city of Plano. Our sales tax for the month of October were down compared to the prior year by 2.02%. There was a positive audit adjustment, however, in the prior fiscal year and there was an even larger positive audit adjustment in the prior fiscal year than this year. Overall, our sales tax numbers continue to look pretty good, though. Our real estate market recap shows the number of days on market was at 32 days in September compared to 28 in September of 2023. The percent of asking was at 98.1% this September, whereas that decreased from 98.5 in September of 2023. Hotel occupancy tax is up by 415,000 compared to the prior fiscal year. And then these next three slides are equity and treasury pool, our investment portfolio maturities, and our investment portfolio diversification. And Mark Whitaker will be going over those, so I'm not going to spend any time on those right now. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. Any questions for Denise?
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is the fourth quarter investment report. Mark Whitaker.
Good evening. I'm Mark Whitaker. I'm the Treasurer here at City of Plano and I'm going to go over the fourth quarter investment report, ending September 30th, same time as the Comfort. Brief update on the economy and then we'll dive into the portfolio. Inflation came in at 2.4% this quarter, which is closer to the Fed funds expectations of 2%, so we're edging closer to that, which is a good sign. GDP was 2.8% growth compared to a 3% in the prior quarter, which again indicates a soft landing, which was the expectations of all the high rates that we've been dealing with over the last two years. Labor market stayed at a 4.1% national percentage, unemployment percentage compared to the 3.9 of Plano, which again points to the direction that the feds were trying to go with the rates in their policies. The average two-year treasury, which is our benchmark, decreased over the last three months, 4.5%, 3.9, and then down to 3.6. That was expected as they decided to edge closer to dropping rates, which they did do in September. They dropped rates by 50 basis points, which has been expected and we've been looking forward to that for the last several years. And we finally got to the point where the economy has reached that tipping point to where they're going to start decreasing rates from this point forward. These are just the minutes from their last report in September, again stipulating that they've got the 2% goal and they're going to be looking at data moving forward as they try to decide when and how to drop rates in the future. This is a graph showing the six-month, two-year, and 10-year treasury. Again, it just shows how the economy has been resilient over the last two years. Luckily, we are getting to a point now where we're going to see some movement. We're going to see some exciting times as far as rates go and the economy. The Treasury yield curve shows that we're continuing to be in an inverted yield curve status, which is not a typical yield curve. Normally, short-term rates are much lower than long-term rates as expectations, but since June of 2022, this is how the yield curve has been and we are looking forward to finally getting to the point where long-term rates are higher than short-term. S and P, getting into the portfolio. We have about $129 million mature in this quarter between munis, agencies, and CDs. We then turned around and invested around $120 million of that. We have a dip in book value of the portfolio by $111 million. That is typical for this time of year. Most of that is because we have a large debt service payment in this quarter and that is what drives that dip. We had a $99 million dip in prior year during the same fiscal. This is the ladder of the portfolio. We currently have 41%. In the zero-to-one short-term rate, we have 23, 21%. And that three-to-four-year range is the tax dollars that we have been receiving over the last two to three months. That is where we'll be focusing those investments to fill that lack of maturities there. So that three-to-four-year range where it's at 4% is where we'll focus and we'll be investing those funds. So that will dip up and we'll just continue this ladder from the three to four and then when we get funds in, we'll invest in the four-to-five-year. Portfolio percent, the portfolio yield is at 3.34% at the end of this quarter. That is close to the two-year benchmark. That gap, which is at 3.62%, is much closer than it has been in the past two years, but as they continue to drop rates, we should exceed the benchmark because of that laddering effect that we just showed. We have non-callable bonds, so it is not affected by interest rate changes, so that 3% will continue to stay steady and slightly increase over the next, hopefully around in the next three to four years until, you know, rates change. We had a 5.6 million interest earnings this quarter with about a 20 million total for the year. As I mentioned, the two-year benchmark, two-year treasury is what we benchmark and this graph shows our portfolio, that gap there at the very right of the screen, how close that is. So in the next quarter, which we've already experienced, those should cross over. And these are the slides that Denise was just mentioning, the diversification of the portfolio. We have 36% municipal bonds and about 35, 39% in agency bonds. That is flipped from the last quarter, but we will focus on the municipal bonds with these next investment rounds and increase that number because that's where the yield is at the moment. We'll take advantage of the areas that we can to maximize as much as we can. Just shows the book value of the portfolio and you can see this, how cyclical this is. Every fourth quarter, we do have that drop because of that large debt service payment and other expenses, but it is cyclical. And this is just a summary of the treasury pool, shows a breakdown of that $111 million decrease in book value. You're looking at 41 million in the General Fund, 53 million is that large debt service payment, and then 29 million is the capital improvement spending, which just means we're spending on projects. We're getting things done. We're spending the money that we issued the debt for. So that is a breakdown of that decrease. There's no changes to the investment policy at this time. That was approved last month and I'm ready for questions.
Thanks, Mark. Any questions? Thank you very much. Next item is consent and regular agendas. Is there an item a council member would like to remove? Next item is council items for future agendas. So we will move back to the regular meeting and we'll start with a consent agenda.
The consent agenda. The consent agenda will be acted upon in one motion and contains items which are routine and typically non-controversial. Items may be removed from this agenda for individual discussion by a city council member, city manager, or any citizen. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests. Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. Motion passes eight to zero. Thank you. Next item.
Items for individual consideration. Public hearing items. Applicants are limited to 15 minutes presentation time with a five-minute rebuttal if needed. Remaining speakers are limited to 30 total minutes of testimony time with three minutes assigned per speaker. The presiding officer may amend these times as deemed necessary. Non-public hearing items. The presiding officer will permit public comment for items on the agenda not posed for a public hearing. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests, the length of the agenda, and to ensure meeting efficiency and may include a cumulative time limit. Speakers will be called in the order the requests are received until the cumulative time is exhausted. Item number one, consideration of a resolution to order a special election to be held on May 3rd, 2025 for the purpose of authorizing general obligation bonds and making provisions for the conduct of the election and other provisions incident and related to the purpose of this resolution.
Good evening. Karen Rhodes Whitley, Budget Director. Before you tonight is the bond referendum election or NIPS. We discussed it in the last meeting. I did hand you out a brand-new copy. We received some late-breaking information regarding election polls from Collin County and we wanted to include all that information for you this evening. The actual referendum totals $647 million and it's made up of the following propositions: 316.5 million for street improvements, 155.2 for a police headquarters, 51 million for a police training center, oops, sorry, 37.5 million for public safety facilities, the majority of this is for fire, 45.1 for a fleet operations center, 1.9 for shim-offending library, and Proposition G is 40.8 million for parks and recreation facility. After tonight, we will go about the order of putting all our education materials together to go into the community impact. We're also going to have a website. We're also going to be doing an educational video that will begin to air mid-April. April 17th, we do have a virtual town hall meeting dedicated to the 2025 bond referendum. Early voting begins April 22nd and lasts through the 29th and then May 3rd is Election Day. We do have several Rotary Clubs and several civic groups that have asked for us to come and present, so we will be holding those presentations. Bob Dransfield has stayed. What questions do you have?
Any questions for Karen? Anthony, I was...
Thank you, Mayor. So I actually don't have...
Feeding breath.
Yes, well, thank you. Thank you for waiting with bated breath. But no, I actually don't have any questions. Karen, you've been so nice to answer all of them, so thank you for that. I guess if we're ready, I was just going to make a comment or a few comments.
With a motion?
With a motion, yes. Okay.
Well, I do have one speaker.
Oh, there's a speaker. Okay. I'm sorry. Didn't know we had a speaker.
No, it's okay. Let's do that and then we'll go into discussion.
Sounds great. Thank you.
The speaker is Bill Lyle.
Good evening, Council. My name is Bill Lyle, 1724 15th Place. If you have mixed emotions about seeing me, I share them. I have mixed emotions about seeing you all as well. The topic before us is the bond election and we'll stick to that topic for now. One of the things that was cut out of the bond election was the...
Good evening, Council. My name is Bill Lyle, seventeen twenty-four fifteenth place. If you have mixed emotions about seeing me, I share them. I have mixed emotions about seeing you all as well. The topic before us is the bond election, and we'll stick to that topic for ten, for now. One of the things that was cut out of the bond election was the right-of-ways for downtown Plano. That's concerning to me. It was over a year and a half ago that each of you voted to put these right-of-ways in. I think there's some error in the thinking about development in downtown Plano. By and large, our city has developed because a developer comes in, buys a piece of property. They need the roadways, they donate the land, the roadways go in consistent with the development. I have been in downtown Plano since nineteen ninety-eight. I have assembled about a hundred thousand square-foot parcel, putting five pieces of property together in a contiguous piece. It's taken twenty years to do that. I believe that I know the downtown Plano area as good as anyone, especially from a real estate standpoint. In order to get redevelopment from Fourteenth Street South to the Twelfth Street Station, it's going to take something disruptive. The word that Jack used in a meeting this week was a catalyst, something that's going to make it go quicker. Make it, something that's going to make it go at all. I believe in downtown Plano, the catalyst should be the city. That's going to take a little bit of disruption. Maybe that disruption is actually putting in the roadways that have been approved. So that's where I think the error is. This happened a year and a half ago. There needs to be vision in downtown Plano. If we want to get the landscapers, like me, out of there, if we want to get the sod farms out of there that block Fourteenth Street during the spring season, to block an entire lane, there's got to be someone that takes the area and has a vision for it. We need entertainment in downtown Plano. If you try to book one of the theaters in downtown Plano, guess what? You can't get four Thursdays in a row for years. Plano likes to think of itself as an net importer of jobs, right? That's what we tell people, hey, we're a net importer. Well, why don't we think of downtown Plano and DART as a way to import people to downtown Plano by reducing the parking ordinances? Between the Parker Road Station and the George Bush Station...
Twenty seconds.
You have three thousand parking spots with a three-to-five-minute train ride to get here. But if you look at the new silver, or the downtown area plan that was just passed, that's not taken into consideration whatsoever. And so I could go on and on, and I'm sure you all believe me. But there's just a lot of missing pieces here in a lot of different aspects. And cutting, John, your ten big things, nothing included about downtown Plano.
Time.
Your comments to DART? Thank you.
Sure.
So Mayor and Council, just out of clarification, when we had the discussion on bond projects, the downtown right-of-way infrastructure was one of the items that did get discussed as funding from another source. So I know there was some interest in council directing staff to bring that back through either TIF funds or capital improvement, or excuse me, capital maintenance funds. So that is the direction that staff has at this point. I would also say just generally that, you know, there's a lot of things at play right now with the bond referendum. And should things like the police headquarters pass, then there are going to be other discussions that staff brings forward for downtown Plano as far as some of the land holdings we have as well, and possibly looking at some planning, future plans to be able to incorporate that. So appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you. Anthony, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I jumped the gun there. So I just wanted to start by echoing what City Manager Israelson said. You know, my understanding was that, as former Commissioner Lyle said, you know, we want to be catalytic in downtown, but the whole purpose of the TIF is to be a catalyst in downtown, and so I think that's the right source of funds for that. Then, moving more broadly, thank you to Karen, Casey, Jason, and everyone for your hard work on this bond package. All the directors, I know it's been Herculean undertaking, and I think we're in a good place. I think last meeting, we talked a lot about giving voters choices, right? I remember Councilmember Prince talked about that. I think Councilmember Horn and really everybody talked about, you know, given the size of this bond election, the importance of giving voters choices. Choices to be meaningful require understanding. And in the last couple of cycles of bond elections, I've seen a lot of mistaken understanding in the community that when we put out the number that is the year-four snapshot, the one-year, single-year cost of the projected tax increase, I think many people believe that's the total cost to the average homeowner of the whole bond package over twenty years. And so I think that we can increase voter understanding as people prepare to vote on this really important bond election by not just looking at a one-year snapshot, but making sure that voters understand these are twenty-year bonds, and we have to make a payment on them every year for twenty years. And then also that the way that we have traditionally published that number does not include the cost of the bonds that can be absorbed into the current interest and sinking rate. It's just the cost of the proposed tax rate increase. I know that the staff works hard to keep voters informed through our voter education materials. I know that we all want informed voters so that Plano voters can make the choice that's right for Plano. I think that the current method, while it provides some valuable information, also generates confusion. I've seen that myself. So as promised to deputy, or to Mayor Pro Tem Two, I will make a motion. I will move that we pass this resolution calling for a bond election with two amendments. The first amendment being that anywhere that the year-four, one-year snapshot of the cost of the projected tax rate increase to the average Plano homeowner appears in our voter education materials, the following statement, or one very similar to it, will appear in bold in the same size of type. This amount is only a one-year snapshot of the cost to the average Plano homeowner of the projected tax rate increase during a single year, the fourth year after the bond election. The debt on these bonds will have to be paid back every year for twenty years, and this amount only reflects the cost of the projected tax rate increase in one of those twenty years. And then the second amendment would be that the year-four snapshot number that we use will not just be the cost of the projected tax rate increase, but the total difference in the average homeowner's property tax bill, including the amount that can be absorbed into the current interest and sinking rate. So with those two amendments, and with great thanks for the staff's hard work on this, I'll move for the passage of this resolution.
Mayor Pro Tem? Oh, sorry.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not seconding this.
Is there a second?
Yes, pending clarification on the second amendment of your motion, not the Constitution.
Yeah, 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 are we talking right to bear arms? No, okay, yeah. So, no, so so that's what I talked about, where the number that we've traditionally published is the number, the cost to the average homeowner of the projected tax rate increase in year four, not the total cost of the difference between no bonds and the bond package. I want voters to understand the total cost that they're signing up for. So this would have us use as that year-four number, not just the cost of the projected tax rate increase, but also add in the cost of the portion that can be absorbed into the current interest and sinking rate.
Okay, so basically informing the voter about the total cost in that irrespective of any other bond interest in sinking taxes in the same year.
That's right, the standalone cost for this bond package, exactly.
Okay, then, yes, I'd second that with both amendments.
Okay. Bob, do you mind coming down and giving advice on that? And again, this is a, this is a vote on the election. If we wanted to talk about the things that you're talking about, which I would advise that we get a professional writer to kind of narrow that down.
Oh, yeah, no, that's why I said similar.
Or we could add like four more pages of paper on that particular one. But Bob, if you would give us some advice on those recommendations, even though this is really just to approve the election of the referendum.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Bob Dransfield with Norton Rose Fulbright. We're your bond counsel. I would suggest to you, Mayor, that the document that you have before you, the resolution calling the election that does have several features in it, included the legal propositions as well as some voter information document that's required by the statute, that you keep that pretty straightforward and simple. And I would, and am inclined to suggest to you that that's not the best place to put the detail that you're looking for, councilman, that I think subsequent voter information document that also goes to the public is probably the better place to put that.
Okay.
Because it can provide you the detail.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Casey?
So I think the part of that amendment that I have a problem with is when you said any time this is posted or stated. So I think I might be open to that if we changed the amendment to where we had a compromise, where if it's somewhere on the website or somewhere on the in the voter information we're going to send out. But to the point that the bond counsel just made, I don't know that it needs to be everywhere where we have legal precedent of things that need to be stated a certain way, or where we need to be short and succinct, and we don't want to overcomplicate things for voters. So if your motion still stands that it has to be every time we're publishing information, then I'm not sure that I can support it that way.
Yep. So let's take a step back. We, this, this item one is to consider a resolution to order a special election. If we want to agendize the marketing materials, or then that, that needs to, that's not on this item. So I don't, I don't, I have no problem discussing what should go and what shouldn't. But this particular item is just to approve a resolution for the election of the referendum. So if we could, if you could take us, withdraw that, and let's go ahead and get that, which, which will have the required materials on the ballot, then we, then we can we can post it for next meeting on the material and how it should be done.
And in terms of the mailing, do we know that timeline work, you know, before we send the mailing out?
Karen, can you answer that question?
That'd be the twenty-fourth, Karen, and then however long that takes.
That's totally fine. And the community impact brochure is not going to go out until the end of March.
Yeah.
So we're more than happy to come back and talk to you.
Okay, so there's plenty of time to discuss it at the next...
But I want to make sure we put it on the agenda, and we get that, we get that, everybody happy with it. But within, within the legal ramifications, but this, this doesn't include that, and I want to make sure I...
I want to make a comment, but I don't want to be part of the motions.
Okay. But Anthony, you'll have to withdraw that.
Okay, so if that's something we're going to look at two meetings from now and, you know...
Just one, just one meeting.
I mean, one meeting from now, two weeks is what I meant to say, sorry, Mayor. I will, I will go ahead and withdraw that motion, but I would like to see us, you know, really look at that two weeks from now.
Okay.
So...
Oh, okay.
I will, I have a comment, then I'll make a motion.
Shelby seconded.
Shelby, you seconded it.
Well, do I have to withdraw the second?
I don't know, does he have to withdraw the second? Or is it just the...
If he withdraws it, that's it.
Yeah. Okay. So Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, I just want to comment on what Anthony said about the cost. You know, I guess we can look at anything as that money spent or money borrowed as cost. But really, I mean, to me, when we're looking at all these propositions that are going up for election, they're really investments on the, in Plano. I mean, right now, as it stands, Plano is growing old, and we need to cosmetic surgery Plano so that we can compete with our neighbors who are much younger and much, you know, much more teenage-y than we are. And so instead of looking at it as cost, really, it's, it's really an investment on ourselves and on our future. So, you know, to say that, you know, this is going to cost so much money, so much money, well, how much money is it going to get returned to us if we were to make that investment today? And so I just want to make sure that that is clear. We're not, you know, we're not just focusing on how much money we're spending, but how much return we are going to get from this. And with that said, I make a motion to to pass this.
Approved.
Approve this.
Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will have to agree with Mayor Pro Tem Two's remarks here. This is an investment. This bond was not put together willy-nilly. We had a citizens advisory committee that went over it. The director spent considerable amount of time laying out the issues in front of us, what needed to be looked at. As most of us get the emails about roads, they're, most of the emails complaining about the roads in bad shape, or they're complaining about the roads under construction, so we really can't win on the roadside. As you see, Plano is growing. We certainly need facilities like a new fire station. We need upgrades of existing fire station, and poor fire station number three just needs to be redesigned and reconstructed. Police headquarters, every year, had the opportunity to go visit that on this side of the jail. It is a hodgepodge of creativity and work to make it to have a flow, to have a process. We certainly need a new police headquarters. The police training facility, again, another opportunity where that is something that could help our police force be the best in Texas. So these bond referendums were, as Mayor Pro Tem Two says, is an investment in the city. We have to invest now. If we don't, it'll cost us more in the long run to invest. You can look at the mid-cities and see where they postponed bonds, and they still haven't caught up. So with that being said, I'll second the motion to approve the election for these bond referendums.
Okay. I have a motion to second. Shelby?
Yes, thank you. I have no amendments to offer, but I want to make a comment. At the last meeting when we discussed these bonds, Councilman Riccadelli and I expressed that maybe we wanted to give our people a little bit of a break with the road construction. And I had intended, I spoke with a couple of people in the past couple of weeks. One is a friend of mine who is in a pretty bad wreck on, I think, legacy attributed to the construction. And as Councilman Horn pointed out, people either say fix the roads or stop fixing the roads, contradictorily. But the, if I understood correctly, the officer who responded to the accident said the exact same accident occurred the prior day in the construction area. And I think it's obvious that our infrastructure needs the work, but it's also become a burden to our people. And I would like to explore creative ways to, and I had a discussion with Mark about this recently, explore creative ways to mitigate or minimize the disruption to our folks while still accelerating the pace of work. Because I think we have seen more wear and tear on our infrastructure than we anticipated in the build-out of our city faster. And we've got to get to, we've got to play catch-up so that we can do preventive maintenance again rather than reactive maintenance. We are doing preventive maintenance, but we are doing a lot of reactive maintenance. We've got to play catch-up to get to that point, and in the long run, that will benefit us, and that will be economically positive. But we also have to be mindful, so I'm willing to vote for this as is without reducing the cost of the roads. But I really do want to explore creative options to get through the work and minimize the disruption to our people.
Thank you. Councilman Riccadelli?
You know, on second thought, I'll reserve my comments for two weeks.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, I have a motion to second to approve agenda item number one. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Thank you. Please.
So Mayor and Council, as a friendly reminder, you have now called the election. So advocacy on either side of the issue for the bonds is now prohibited. So please make sure that use of any governmental tools or resources or anything else is factual only in nature towards the bond referendum. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Oh, sorry. Councilmember Williams?
Just quick clarification on that. That is advocacy on the part of using city resources, not individual advocacy. Is that accurate? Using our own resources?
I believe if you're representing the city as a council member, and that's known, that that becomes a responsibility. that, that becomes a responsibility of you not being pro or con. Is that correct?
So I sent this, the guidance additionally in writing via email, so, yeah, but you are, I think you're on the right track.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, item number two.
Item number two, consideration to approve an expenditure for construction of the Oak Point Parks Maintenance Facility Project FAC-F-7524 in the amount of $12,986,776 for the engineering department and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Good evening. Caleb Thornhill, Director of Engineering, here to present on this item tonight. Also have Paul Coonza, Facilities Manager, and Dave Angeles with the Parks Department. So like Lisa just mentioned, this is consideration to accept, to approve an expenditure just under $13 million for the reconstruction or the construction, actually, of the Oak Point Maintenance Facility. It's located at the northwest corner of Los Rios and Parker. If I've got it right, yes? This is a rendering of what the location would look like. You can see the darker brown color is mostly office for staff and then the lighter brown to the far of the side of the picture is a shop in the maintenance area for the location. So for the needs for this, this was approved with the 2021 bond and we did a spatial analysis of what's needed for this facility. Dave Angeles will talk a little bit more in detail about that. We have been under design for the last year or so and we've reached a point to where we're ready to begin construction and that's where we're at tonight. This replaces a maintenance facility at Shell Park. It also, it provides an additional trail element with the trailhead with the bathroom and increases the capacity on the east side of town for our maintenance for the Parks Department. Here you'll see the amounts. The, the professional services of the design is just over $2 million for tonight. For your consideration, it's just under $13, at 12.98. And then we do have other construction costs. That'll be the moving of equipment into the location, utility hookups, fiber, city fiber, furniture and things like that that makes up the remainder of that. So the total estimated project cost is $16.1 million. Here is a site layout of what it looks like. Again, Parker there is on your right. North is actually to your left if you're looking at it like that. You can see the larger building in the center. That is the combination of the office and the maintenance building. It's just over 15,000 total square feet. And then up there to your north, that other small circle, that is the trailhead. It includes 12 parking spaces as well as a bathroom, a drinking fountain. I think there's a bike repair station at that as well. The total site has just over 90 parking spaces provided and Dave will get into some of the specifics on that. And let me have Dave actually get into that right now.
Dave Angeles, Director of Parks. So this is a quick image of the facility. This was developed after conducting a spatial analysis that was led by a consultant. This facility will house our natural resources and our east district groups. That's a total of 26 staff. When you combine those two facilities that they're working out of right now, they're working out of 3,000 square feet approximately. The key site that this is replacing is the Shell Maintenance Facility. That facility is actually directly adjacent to Shell Park, Memorial Middle School, and also Bowman Elementary. So not only have we outgrown the site, when possible, we really would like to get our maintenance facilities a little bit further away from the residential areas as well as preventing the ingress and ingress of our staff during school hours and in school release times. As far as equipment at this site, those two teams use, they have currently 19 trucks, 18 trailers, 11 tractors, 15 riding motors, seven utility vehicles and 25 various equipment and implements that they use throughout. So really, overall, this site is going to be supporting them. So looking at this diagram, on the left, that's the, that's the administrative side. That will support our professional staff and the supervisory staff of these groups. When you move north, so that would be the central part of the facility there, we have locker rooms, showers, our park staff. Do you get out and they're, they're in the field quite often. So when they're done with their day, they do like to shower before they go home and get in their personal vehicles. Park staff generally bring their lunches, so we have a break room for them. As you move further north, we have our pull-through bays. So there's two pull-through bays. That allows for us to pull our vehicles straight through. It also allows us to protect vehicles during inclement weather and also perform work during rain or other weather when normally we wouldn't be able to do that if we didn't have the shelter. And then to the very far of the left, that is gonna be individual work areas for those two groups. So that's where the field staff can, can meet in the morning and get their daily assignments. And then I also just wanted to touch on the trailhead improvements that will also happen at this site. We are really trying to look at this as the one-cut philosophy. We're doing a lot of work there. And so if there's an opportunity for us to provide public-facing amenities, we wanted to do that. And so as long as we're making those improvements, it made sense for us to put a restroom building, improved trailhead, bike station, pump, drinking fountain there as well. And I believe... Caleb, you had some additional?
All right. Thank you. Any questions for staff? Councilmember Riccadelli?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask, I saw the breakdown, Caleb, and thank you for it, of the 16 million. I was wondering, within the 12-point-something million guaranteed maximum price, if you could break that down by like the office, the shop, the other components of the project, like all of the paving and other improvements. That would be very helpful. Thank you.
Sure. So, yeah, there's several items that make this site unique, to your point. You know, the, the building complexity, it's not a standard retail center, it's not a standard residential. It's got a combination of office and shop and locker rooms. The location lends itself to some significant earthwork based on the hill that it's located at. You can see there from the grading to the, the left side of the page. Make sure I get the left side. Yeah, the north side, there's some very steep grades, which means you have to have some significant cuts on the south side. So just from an earthwork standpoint, that's nearly half a million dollars of dirt moving and that also includes setting the foundation of the building. As far as the building itself, when you pull out the numbers, it comes out to close to about 8.1 million just for the building. There's about 1.5 million in parking. I mentioned the 94 parking spaces. It's a combination of six, seven, and eight-inch concrete throughout the site, but obviously very robust due to the equipment, eight-inch coming in. The fire lanes are around seven and then the majority of the rest of the site, six. There's about 1.2 million square feet of landscaping. There's security for the entire site, so there's a fence around that. But for just the buildings itself, we don't have it broken up into a cost for offices versus shop. It's for the building as a whole.
Well, thank you for that great information, Caleb. So just one more question on that. This is kind of similar to the question that I asked about the West Maintenance Facility during the, the bond proposal discussions. I, I'm doing mental math on the spot, which can be dangerous, but the 8.1 million for, I believe it's about a 15,000-square-foot building, on an order of magnitude, I think that works out to something around $500 a square foot?
You're close. It's 525.
525. There, there we go. Well, I guess my, my mental math lives to see another day. So there we go.
Very close.
But anyway, I was just wondering, since that is, you know, compared to some other types of construction, a fairly high cost per square foot, you mentioned some of the challenges, but within the building itself, what is driving that per-square-foot cost?
So the other elements, like Dave mentioned, is this is not only a place for staff and supervisors, it's also an opportunity for conferencing for that staff. So there is a, a large technology component to it, just over $200,000 for technology. Dave mentioned the pull-through bays and the maintenance. There is lifts in there to be able to pull up. Now, the large maintenance for fleet will be at our fleet center. But if there isn't a need to replace blades on mowers, they have the ability to lift those up. So there's some specialty equipment that's included in there. We've got a tension pond at this location. And then, of course, this also includes the trailhead, which is the 12 parking spaces, the bathroom. So there's water that's going to that water and sewer. So when I did a search, I found two locations, both of them, one referred to south and one referred to Texas. So Texas was included in the south. But it showed construction cost for commercial between 270 and 680 and between 435 and 870. So I feel like the 525 falls within both of those ranges. It's comparable to what we've seen on some other projects. And bringing it down, if you just look at the 13 million or the 12.98, it's about 836 a square foot. But again, going back to the building complexity, the, the location where it's at, the service that it's providing, and then the materials, it's obviously not just generic siding. It's CMU, it's stone. So when you factor in all those factors, we felt like this was a, an equitable price for what we were getting.
Okay, well, thank you for that detailed information, Caleb and Dave. I really appreciate that. Thank you all.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion second. Thanks, Caleb. Appreciate it. I have a motion to second to approve item number two. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Thank you. Next item.
Comments of public interest. This portion of the meeting is to allow up to three minutes per speaker with 30 total minutes on items of interest or concern and not on items that are on the current agenda. The council may not discuss these items but may respond with factual or policy information. The council may choose to place the item on a future agenda. And we do have one speaker this evening. And that is Bill Lyle, and we're moving him into the meeting. Mr. Lyle, if you'll go ahead and put on your, there you go, camera and microphone. And go ahead.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, council. Bill Lyle, 1724, 15th place. Mayor Muns, I am addressing you specifically because I watched the meeting, I think it was in December, where public comments were the topic and when y'all would bring those back. I'm concerned that this has gone on too long. It's crazy for me to be there and if it's something that you guys want to talk about, we can do that in person. But if it's something that somebody else wants to talk about, I gotta scramble home and, and get on a computer and come to you this way. Your reasoning in that meeting was that you were gonna have to figure out the technology. And some of your other council members at the time said, "So we're gonna understand the technology for agenda items, but we're not gonna be able to understand the technology for public comments." They made great points and you didn't have an answer and there's not an answer that makes sense. I understand you might not want to listen to folks. I understand it's a pain at the end of a meeting, which brings me to another point. You ought to put it where everyone knows what time it's gonna happen. Having an opportunity to address our elected officials in the public square is just a fundamental part of running a transparent, open government. And I think you should take this back to the beginning and you ought to do it in person. I don't think that's asking too much. And I think the excuses about technology have been proven to, to, to be gone now. Matter of fact, it's much more difficult with technology to come home and do this. Last meeting, there was a three-to-three vote on the Schimmel Fig Library. I don't know, I realize I'm not saying that right. Staff was given, staff gave council two completely incorrect pieces of information. There are absolutely efficiencies to replacing shelves after you've done the carpet and the painting and the other remodeling. You're not going to buy a new couch for your living room and then store it in the garage while you redo your carpet and paint the house. The way that makes sense is you bring the furniture, fixtures and equipment in after you've done the construction process. One of the things that's before y'all tonight is remodeling this library. I've seen the video that Jack presented to me on how these shelves are moved. It was five men and specialized equipment. It doesn't happen in a vacuum. It doesn't happen for free. And staff gave y'all false information.
20 seconds.
To the three council members that voted initially to cable, had you kept your courage, you could have also prevented this from going forward. But now, staff had false information about whether or not moving this stuff out was correct and you had false information on deficiencies.
Time.
That should be a problem.
There being no further business, meetings adjourned.